Good evening. This is the Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm Janice Tataraka. I'm joined by other members of the board, Joan Cromwell, Joseph Mahoney, Marilyn Vega Torres, and Arthur Arsonault. And on this side, we have the staff that keeps us running, John De Priest, Adam Roy, Will Checho, and Hector Velez. Let me explain a little bit about the process, how this is going to work today. This is the first hearing. We will not be deciding anything today. After today, the meeting will go to the Planning Board. The hearing will go to the Planning Board on the 15th of July. So first, we'll get a presentation from the petitioners. Then the public will have an opportunity to speak. And again, this won't be the only opportunity because when we come back here in August, then the hearing will still be open and people will be able to speak. Today, I will ask people to speak, limit their remarks to three minutes. This way, it gives everybody the opportunity to speak. If at the end of everybody's chance to speak, if something wasn't said that you believe needed to be said, people can come up and add another minute or so to what they had heard. But just to keep this way, we can keep it going and making sure everybody has the chance to speak. So, let's see, is there anything else I wanted to make sure I covered? That was it. Oh, and whenever you speak, make sure you speak into your microphones because this is going, obviously, Channel 5 is here. And that will be also going on CCTV. If you're uncomfortable with being filmed with Channel 5, just let us know ahead of time or through somebody, and we'll ask them to stop filming during that period of time. So, I'm going to begin by reading the formal hearing and then open it up to the petitioner. This is case 2025-07-100, Justin Drive, Boston Provisions LLC, for special permits to establish a seafood processing and distribution facility in the industrial one district and extend the use into the adjoining lot in the Naval Hospital Commercial NHC District. John, there are comments that you wanted to make?
Just the permits for the board, the permits that you are looking at, the site in which the proposed use is located is in the industrial district. And the associated parking is in the abutting Naval Hospital Commercial District. The proposed use is for a 75,000-square-foot meat processor with 7,500 square feet or 10% of the site set aside for fish processing. The meat processing itself is permitted by right, meaning that no zoning review is required for that use. However, the 7,500 square feet of fish processing is permitted in the industrial district, subject to issuance of a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. The proposed use is not permitted in the Naval Hospital District, so the parking proposed in that district will require a special permit also from you to extend the parking use into that district. In addition to these special permits, the meat processing site is over 8,000 square feet in size and requires more than 25 off-street parking spaces. Therefore, a major site plan review by the Planning Board is also required. That will take place on July 15.
Thank you. And so, could you please, petitioners, introduce yourselves and introduce us to your project? Oh, and by the way, if anybody can't see, they want to see, feel free to come and stand over on the sides. Just don't stand in front of us so we can be able to see, okay? You're welcome to stand over there.
Good evening, everyone. David Midland, representing Boston Provisions, the petitioner in this matter. Mr. De Priest has explained very clearly what the purpose of this petition is. I have a team with me led by Michael Moniz, who is the CEO of Boston Provisions. He will begin the presentation and then introduce the other people on our team as we go along. Team members have very specific knowledge as to some of the issues that are concerning people here, and hopefully, questions will be answered to everyone's satisfaction. So, Michael, do you want to start? You ready?
Sure.
If it's easier for you to walk around with a microphone, that's fine. But just make sure you're always talking into the microphone.
Thank you. I'm going to start seated, a little nervous. Okay. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. My name is Mike Monis, and I'm the CEO of Boston Provisions. On behalf of our entire team, I want to sincerely thank the members of the Zoning Board and the residents of Chelsea for taking the time to attend tonight's meeting. I apologize to the residents that this monitor is maybe not easily seen, but do note that hopefully by the end of this week, everything that we share in this presentation, as well as any reports that we reference, will be available on www.bostonprovisions.com. Okay. So, we're here to talk about our proposed project at 100 Justin Drive, a project we believe will bring jobs, opportunity, long-term investment to this community. We're looking forward to sharing our plans with you, answering your questions, and working together to make sure this project is a positive addition to the city of Chelsea. John, could you please go to the next slide? Okay. Before we dive in, I'd like to introduce the key members of our team who have been instrumental in bringing this project forward. You'll be hearing from several of them tonight, including Dimitri Hazelrigg, our Vice President of Operations, Alicia Lumia, Vice President of Marketing and Brand Strategy, Dill Rosinski, Principal Engineer at Epsilon Associates, who conducted the environmental and odor mitigation assessments, and Elizabeth Perth, an Associate Principal at Howard, Stein, and Hudson, who led our traffic and transportation studies. Together, this team brings a deep commitment to transparency, responsible development, and collaboration with the city of Chelsea. Tonight's presentation is designed to give you a clear and thorough understanding of who we are, how we operate, and what this project would mean for the city, from job creation, environmental safeguards, to traffic flow, and community engagement. We also hope that tonight serves as an opportunity to clarify some of the questions and concerns that have come up around the project. There's been a fair amount of information circulating, and we want to ensure that everyone has had a chance to understand the accurate picture of what we're proposing and why. For starters, this is not a seafood processing facility. Boston Provisions is a food-centric, chef-centric, wholesaler, and distributor. We serve professional kitchens, restaurants, hotels, universities, specialty retailers by providing them with premium seafood, meats, and gourmet essentials. If you think of a grocery store, Boston Provisions is like the back-of-house version. We have a seafood department, we have a meat department, and we have a specialty dry goods department, except instead of shoppers, our customers are chefs. Instead of shopping carts, we're loading refrigerated trucks headed to the region's best kitchens. We aren't a manufacturer or a processor in the traditional sense. We are a service provider, sourcing and preparing exceptional ingredients for people who rely on quality, consistency, and transparency every day. Boston Provisions is the operational backbone behind two of Boston's most respected food brands, Wolf's Fish and Savernor's Butchery. In this new facility, we'll bring them together under one efficient, modern roof. Wolf's Fish and Savernor's Butchery aren't just respected food brands, they're actually regarded as institutions. I'm sure many of the people in this room are aware of one of the two. Both have served the greater Boston area for nearly 100 years. In fact, Wolf's will hit its centennial next year in 2026. Wolf's was founded in 1926 in Brookline, known for its commitment to responsible sourcing, supporting the neighborhood, supporting the waterfront, and has evolved into a modern seafood company trusted by chefs across the country, currently servicing east as Boston all the way west to Napa. Savernor's Butchery was founded in 1939 in Cambridge, and rose to national prominence as Julia Child's go-to butcher. Many of you may know Savernor's as the official butcher of the Boston Red Sox, and it remains a symbol of quality and tradition in New England. These two iconic businesses helped shape Boston's food culture for generations, and now with Boston Provisions, we're building the infrastructure to carry that legacy forward for the next 100 years, hopefully, in the city of Chelsea. This project just isn't about a new building. It's about people. Boston Provisions is 100% employee-owned and operated. We pay a median wage of over $62,500 and cap executive compensation at no more than four times the lowest salaried employee. Our current team is 125 strong, and roughly 15% of them already live right here in the city of Chelsea. We plan to relocate all 125 jobs to Justin Drive on day one, and we anticipate creating another 125 jobs in the first three years. I've been in this business since 2017, when there were fewer than 20 staff members. Nearly a decade later, I'm proud to share that a majority of our team has been with us for over five years. These aren't just employees. They're part of my extended family. I see myself as a steward of this family, and I'm deeply committed to building the infrastructure and opportunity that would allow it to grow and thrive for decades to come. My biggest fear as an operator is not profits. My biggest fear is not providing the trajectory and the growth for my employees to grow. With this building, we'll be able to accomplish that. Why Chelsea? Chelsea isn't just where we want to operate, it's where our people live. Over half of our staff live in Chelsea, East Boston, Everett, or Malden. Many of them currently spend 90 minutes or more commuting each day. By moving to Justin Drive, we're dramatically improving the quality of life for our staff, which is our number-one focus. From a logistics standpoint, Chelsea offers the benefit of access to the Tobin Bridge, Interstate 93, and the Ted Williams Tunnel. It just makes sense for our team and for our business. The slide we have up here is the current site at 100 Justin Drive. The total building at 100 Justin Drive is approximately 264,000 square feet. Boston Provisions will be leasing roughly 80,000 square feet on the second floor, west side of the facility, closest to the marina. This is the current condition of 100 Justin Drive, a site that has been underutilized and in need of substantial reinvestment. What you're seeing here is the starting point. Boston Provisions, in partnership with the building's owner, intends to invest nearly $15 million into interior renovations alone to create a modern, clean, and efficient food distribution facility. In addition, we're committing significant resources to improving the exterior, including full regrading of the parking lot to ensure better drainage, usability, along with extensive landscaping and beautification efforts. Our goal is not just to occupy this space, but to elevate it, turning what's currently a tired industrial site into a well-maintained, professionally-run facility that Chelsea and its neighboring residents can be proud of. These renderings show our vision for the space, a clean, thoughtfully-designed facility that reflects the quality and professionalism of the brands at houses. You'll notice clearly-defined areas for employee parking, loading, and operations, with improved circulation and aesthetics throughout the site. This facility is not about heavy manufacturing. As I mentioned, the space we're occupying is roughly 80,000 square feet. Less than 25% of this space will be used for light fabrication. It's about efficient, temperature-controlled handling and distribution of premium food products. To walk you through those day-to-day operations and the best practices that we follow to ensure food safety, cleanliness, and community impact, I'd like to now introduce Dimitri Hazelrigg of Boston Provisions. Dimitri previously led quality assurance for Menina Tortilla Chips, which I'm sure many of you have probably had, probably had some today. He brings an extensive expertise in food safety systems, regulatory compliance, and operational excellence. His experience has been instrumental in shaping how this facility is being designed and will run from day one. Dimitri?
I'd first like to say hello, everyone. Good evening. Happy to see you all.
Your name, just formally for the record, give us your name.
So, to start...
What's your name?
Oh, I am Dimitri Hazelrigg. I am the VP of Operations for Boston Provisions, and I'm here to speak more on my department as a whole for you. To begin this, I'd like to speak about our hours of operation. One of the core attributes of our hours of operation is that...
I can't hear you.
Really?
I'll get closer.
One of the core aspects of our industry as a whole is that we start early, we end early, and it is the most efficient time to get any employee coming from any varying area in the surrounding area of Chelsea in our doors. Hours of operation right now tend to go from 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and then a second shift from 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Please keep your comments to yourself until it's time to speak. Thank you.
With this, the largest portion of all our employees come in for the 6:00 AM shift, and then it slowly dissipates as the day goes on. This is because the majority of our day is in the beginning, where it is the most optimal time for, as we all know, chefs to get all of their produce, all of their product, all their specialty goods, get it in the door, and the ability to fabricate it, so that all of us, as people, can enjoy it. With coming to Chelsea, we will be growing as a whole, bringing many new jobs and possibilities to the community as a whole. And with that, these personnel, percentage-wise, will funnel in through these doors within these timeframes. Now, as for environmental mitigation, specifically odor control, one of the glorious things about what we do as a whole, being a processor, not a manufacturer, is that we have to keep everything within regulatory compliance. With that, with HACCP, FSMA, the FDA, and the USDA, we have strict guidelines to keep everything within the cold-chain range of 32 to 38 degrees Fahrenheit. With that, odor is fairly completely mitigated, almost, because as odor begins to go and aerosolize into the air, the temperature itself begins to restrict the actual particulates, esters, to start to move about. So, they kind of stay trapped within a completely insulated environment, which our factory has to be, to be compliant with all of these different regulatory agencies. Pest control is even more heavily regulated. One of the great things that we want to bring into this facility is to become SQF-certified. SQF is Safe Quality Food. It funnels under the GFSI regulatory compliance, which is acknowledged all around the world. And with this, all traps, bi-weekly reporting, and all mitigation processes are put in place to ensure that we can keep that. SQF runs on a grading system. The wonderful thing about that is if you ever go below a 65, which is a D grade, as we all know, you fail permanently, and you can never be certified again. So, food safety is taken very seriously in our country. So food safety is taken very seriously in our country, and outside of it as well. And what we do best is we ensure the most quality of our product for the consumer on a daily basis. On top of that, as I mentioned before, because we have to keep the cold chain so heavily restricted, we essentially create an environment where pests relatively never want to live in. They want to live in a nice, warm environment, where they have a lot of snacks, a lot of cushiony bedding, and unfortunately, well, I should say, fortunately, we just don't provide that for them. And being so inhospitable, we never really have to worry about that. Right now, our pest control is funneled through Ecolab, which many of the restaurants that all of you go to also use. They use the same chemicals, they use the same restrictive practices, and Ecolab gets us our bi-weekly reports, and we have never had an instance up until this date. Sewage and drainage. As per the FDA, the Massachusetts Board of Health, and the Chelsea DPW standards, all of our drainage funnels through to the actual grease trap basin. It also has to go through a treatment step, because the wonderful thing that all of us love about the state of Massachusetts is all the precious coastline. And one of the great things about this location for us is that it's close to water. And with that, we have to be restricted to these guidelines and ensure that all instances of whatever is produced in our factory stays within our factory. It is treated, and before it goes out, it is filtered one last time, and all of our personnel are vigorously trained in their standard sanitation operating procedures, their HACCP plans, and their training matrices to ensure that these basins are cleared out on a daily basis to ensure that all of these particulates never go out into the world. Diesel emissions. Today, Wolf's Fish only has 30% of their entire fleet as an actual diesel vehicle. With this, I, myself, go forward to procure all of these vehicles and ensure that they are within the year range that requires us to put death fluid in them. This death fluid prevents, to a certain percentage, NOx fumes, which are the emissions that many people actually fear. That's only 30% of our current fleet today, and moving forward, we would like to try to mitigate as much as possible. That means that the rest of our vehicle fleet is actually the same as your gasoline cars, some of which are fleet...
Excuse me, while he's testifying, let's have a little decorum. It's his opportunity. I would ask him not to speak when you're speaking, so I'm gonna ask the same of you people. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt your flow.
No, it's fine. So, transportation evaluation, our access and egress. Our access and egress are the same flow coming up partially from William Street and into our actual facility. As you can see, we use a software system for our distribution company that is used all around the world by much bigger fleets than ours, and I use this to mitigate and direct traffic as I need. As you can see on the red, I have put it in that all fleet drivers understand and acknowledge that they can never go on a right turn coming out of our facility onto Commandant Way. There's only one possible choice that they can make, and there's only one possible way that they can go, and that is shown by the green line. Thanks.
Thank you, Dimitri. Now I'd like to invite Dale Rosinski to join us to talk about his studies done specific to the odor impacts of the 100 Justin Drive project.
Good evening. My name is Dale Rosinski. I'm a principal with Epsilon Associates. I'm an air quality engineer, registered professional engineer, environmental engineering with 45 years' experience. I visited the facility in the Boston waterfront about a month ago. I also visited Savinor Butchery in Cambridge to observe the operations, to assess the odors and the level of cleanliness, and where odors might be generated, how they might be emitted from the facility, and how they might be dispersed into the neighborhood. And what I found was a very clean operation. It stood out to me as, just from walking around the entire complex, where there's, you know, several other similar types of fish processing, that it had the least odor of any of those that I observed. And I believe that the reason is because of this very strict attention to cleanliness, the frequency of cleaning events, trash removal, the icing and refrigeration practices that keep the entire operation that's doing fish processing at the temperature range that was mentioned. It's basically like being in a refrigerator, and that goes all the way to the loading docks. So the entire stream of in and out goes through the loading docks. The loading docks have plastic sheeting on them to prevent airflow. They pick up the bones and other byproducts every day. There's no fish guts or anything you might imagine, though that's all done on the ships. It comes in as a clean product of fish meat, basically. It's fish meat and skin with some bones. And so really what they're doing is they're cutting that up. It's kind of like a butchery for fish, if you will. Would frankly, you know, I was actually very impressed with how clean it was. Now, of course, the reason that fish will smell is if it rots, right? If it decomposes, it will turn into organic compounds, organic sulfides, and so forth that are odorous. Everybody has smelled bad fish, right? And certainly, you know, the dumpsters, the trash area is a critical area. They do use some carbon absorber pellets in those, and I came away saying, well, there is a possibility that some odor can come out through the trash room, so I highly recommended that they basically put in a system to ventilate the trash room internally through carbon absorption tanks, if you will, tanks full of activated carbon. The activated carbon, from my experience in designing these for other facilities, will completely remove all the odor from that air inside the trash room. And you can get these in 55-gallon drums or Carboy size, and you just have to, you know, through, over time, learn how often to replace them and replace them on a regular basis, and it will cut down the odor even more from what their current practices. I believe with that measure, the only place I see odor actually being able to come out of the facility... Next slide, please. Is through the loading dock. So what happens is, even though there's no ventilation from the facility, where you break that interface between the cool temperatures of 38 degrees, say, and the outside temperature, if the outside temperature is greater than that, when you break that barrier, you know, when you're bringing in and out of that flap, you do get a little instantaneous puff where the hot air, the cold air goes to the bottom and kind of spills out the bottom, if you will, and the hot air comes in from the top. And so there is a slight instantaneous exchange there. So what I then looked at is, okay, well, what would happen to this odor? How would it get into the community? And the way odor moves is pretty obvious. It's with wind direction. It's where's the wind blowing? And fortunately, this is a very well-sighted facility from that respect, because the part of the facility that will be doing the fish processing and the loading docks is almost due north of the closest residential building to the south of the facility, on Admiral Hill, at the base of Admiral Hill, which is about 400 feet away. What I'm showing here is a wind rose from Logan Airport over five years, and the wind blows from the north or within 90 degrees of north, northeast, northwest, only 5% of the time. So it's one of the least impactful wind directions. In other words, 95% of the time, the wind's gonna be blowing in other directions that are gonna be away from the closest resident. From my experience with odor measurement, odor dispersion, et cetera, my judgment is that that small amount of occasionally brief odor that might come out, spill out the base of the loading dock, by the time it gets, even within that 5% of the time, by the time it gets to the residences, and the further away it would be diminished, there should be very little odor. I mean, there might be a brief and occasional whiff of odor, but there's not gonna be any, you know, there's not gonna be a cloud of odor over the neighborhood. That's just not possible in this circumstance. I've worked on many different odor facilities that have odor, and, you know, I actually can use my nose to tell about how much odor is in a facility, that both the concentration and the quantity of odor that could be released is very small. The way I looked at this facility, to me, it's, you know, when I go to the supermarket, I go to the fish counter at the supermarket, yeah, there's a little bit of fresh fish odor there, right at that counter. To me, this is no different. This is, you know, the same kind of operation. They're doing the same kinds of cutting, and, you know, and it's not even, you know, sitting out very long. It's going into packaging, it's being, it's under ice, which is not in the supermarket necessarily all the time. So there's not gonna be any cooking, or baking, or other processes that could cause odor. Next slide, please. In contrast, the facility that was here before, most recently Signature Bread, actually had an air permit from the Mass DEP because it was emitting volatile organic compounds from the bread-making process, which is also an odor. I mean, you know, bread has an odor. It's probably, most people think it's a pleasant odor, but it is an odor, but it is a result of volatile organic compounds, which is a precursor to ground-level ozone, which is what you breathe in the air, especially on hot summer days, and, you know, exacerbates asthma, et cetera. So ozone's a pretty nasty air pollutant. VLC is a precursor. They were allowed to emit 24 tons per year of volatile organic compounds by their air permit. It was uncontrolled, they just submitted it through stacks. This is, to me, this is much less of an impact than that was, okay? They also had many more trucks. They had heavy-duty diesel tractor trailers, up to 12 trucks at, like, as early as 6:00 AM, eight during the day, 20 heavy-duty diesel trucks a day. I'm guessing most of those were not controlled. In other words, they were probably older trucks that didn't have the modern controls that were mentioned earlier. The truck traffic from this is much less, only 30% are diesel. All those diesel trucks, as I understand it, have the latest EPA-required controls, which is the use of diesel exhaust fluid, which is urea, which is organic ammonia, which, you know, any place that sells diesel has a tank, and you can go up and put in your diesel DEF. And what that does is that goes into the exhaust, and then there's a catalyst within the vehicle, a selective catalytic reduction catalyst, and it actually takes that ammonia as a reducing agent and converts the NOX to harmless nitrogen and water. So it essentially eliminates like 90% of the NOx emissions you would get from a diesel vehicle. So these are very clean vehicles. For my, I've modeled many, many facilities like this over the years. This is a very small truck generator, relative to many other facilities I've modeled, and I'm confident that this would never exceed any national ambient equality standard. These are protective standards issued by EPA that protect everybody, everybody, whether you're, you know, you know, to the children, to people who have sicknesses, et cetera, they are designed to be protected. So the two pollutants that would be of concern from a diesel or NOX in particular matter, the emissions from this are gonna be tiny, tiny compared to the 1,000 trucks that are already operating in the area. I mean, we're talking about less than a 2% increase in diesels that are well-controlled. So it's really, you know, from an actual emissions standpoint, much less than 1% increase. It's really insignificant. Finally, with respect to noise, I know there've been concerns with noise. Same principle, if you add two noise sources together, same noise source, okay? The result is you get a 3-decibel increase. The Mass DEP has a provision that says you can't increase noise from a new facility more than 10 decibels above the existing ambient. This project would, because of those 1,000 trucks that are already there and all the other urban noises that you get in the region, you would not be able to perceive the increase from this. These trucks, you know, they're smaller trucks, you're not gonna notice them against the background that's already out there. That's the way you perceive noise. You perceive it against the existing background. So if you live in a, if you lived out in the middle of a rural area, and it was extremely, extremely quiet, and you heard a truck go by, you might notice that more than in this area where there's many, many trucks already. That's how noise works. So I really don't see how this would be a nuisance of any sort from either an air quality or a noise perspective.
Thank you, Dale. I'd like to invite up Elizabeth Perth to talk about her evaluation of the transportation and its impacts in the community.
Thanks, Mike. Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Peart. I'm with Howard Stein Hudson. I'm an associate principal and a transportation engineer, and I've been employed there for over 20 years. Please keep the door open. You can keep the... Okay, thanks. All right, I'll try and speak louder over the vacuuming. So we conducted a transportation evaluation of this site and of the operations that you've already heard about tonight. This is a previously active site, as Dale explained, from a bakery operation. And what we do first is look at the existing transportation conditions in the area. So what's up on the screen right now is a table that's showing the average daily traffic on the Beecham-William Street corridor. Now, there's a lot of numbers on there, and I'm not gonna go over all of them, but I think the key takeaways are that approximately 15,700 vehicles traverse the Beecham-William Street corridor over the course of a weekday. Approximately 8.5% of those trips are trucks. And as you can see with that data, there's a slightly higher percent of traffic that's heading westbound, Beecham Street out towards Lower Broadway, than is traveling eastbound. So those are baseline numbers that we use in our analysis. In addition to that, we also did, and I do not have a graphic showing this, we also did turning movement counts during the peak periods at the key intersection of William Street, at Spruce Street, at Commandant's Way, so that we understand what's happening there during the peak hours. And by peak hours, I mean the peak commuter hours. So the morning peak hour and the afternoon peak hour, so we know all the vehicles, the number of vehicles that are turning, turning left, turning right, traveling through the intersection. And again, that, in addition to the ADT volumes that are up on the screen, provide us a baseline to then do future analysis of the project. The second table, and I'll get back to the traffic analysis in a moment, but the second table on this slide is showing the two key bus routes in the area, including the Route 104 and the Route 112. So these would be bus routes that our employees could use to travel to and from work during the hours that the buses are operating. And I would say the Route 104 is the really key route there, because it operates earlier in the morning and into late in the evening. Next slide, please. Thank you. So this table is showing the project-generated trips over the course of a weekday from our facility. So as has been explained, the operations will start earlier in the morning, and the peak is really early in the morning and throughout the midday, and then trickling off through later in the afternoon, and certainly much lower in the evening, although there are a few vehicle trips then. So this is showing the number of new trips. So during those key peak hours of operation, the AM peak hour, we're anticipating an additional 17 vehicle trips into and out of the city. 17 vehicle trips into and out of the site. So a total of nine in and eight out for a total of 17 trips. So that's a very low number of new trips during the morning peak hour. During the afternoon peak hour, which is that four to five commuter peak hour, we're anticipating that the site would generate a total of 37 new vehicle trips. And that includes six entering and 31 exiting because that's the employee shift exiting during the afternoon peak hour. So a total of 37 trips. Next slide, please. So we take that information, we took that baseline traffic information and we ran an intersection capacity, capacity analysis of that key intersection of Williams at Spruce at Commandant's Way. And we already know that the increase in volume from this project will be less than 2% during those peak hours. And given those numbers that I quoted you before, the impact to that key intersection will be imperceptible to people that are traveling through the intersection. So our conclusion is that the traffic impacts associated with this project are really imperceptible and can be considered very minor. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. I'd like to ask Alicia Lumia to join us.
Hello, Alicia Lumia. I am the Vice President of Marketing and Brand Strategy for Boston Provisions. And you've heard tonight a lot about how we operate, you know, our, how our business is conducted in the most practical sense. And so I'd like to tell you about how we conduct business in a more, you know, in an ethical sense and what drives us. As you've heard, part of our desire to move to this community is because it's the community where so much of our team already lives. You know, we are committed to not just creating jobs, just have any jobs, but to create jobs that are good, that have a trajectory, that allow people to advance in their lives, take care of their families. One initiative that we've done since 2021 is offer English language classes to staff and those classes are free of charge and they are also on paid time. So, you know, we understand that many people are even juggling multiple jobs, they have multiple family commitments. We make sure that they are both, they are compensated for learning. They can keep taking that class as many times as they want. I know people have gone through several different rounds over the years. And so we've worked with JVS, who provides the, the teachers in the curriculum. We provide the space and we provide, you know, the regular hourly wage of those employees as they pursue English, since that's, you know, key to their ability to advance. We're also really committed to promoting from within. And so, I mean, currently we have, you know, two department heads, four managers, two supervisors who started in entry level positions with the company and have been promoted up through the ranks. You know, we like to make sure that everyone knows there's a real, you know, there's a culture of advancement and the fact that there are people, you know, it might be their boss or their boss's boss who started at the same place they are, really, you know, sends that message home more than we could just by saying that. Then go to the next slide. Is that another thing that we're committed to is really being part of our communities and being an active proactive, you know, agent of good in the communities where we are, where we work. I mean, we're essentially an extension of the hospitality industry and hospitality is all about taking care of people. It's by nature a very generous community. We end up involved in many, many fundraisers through our customers all year long. And then we have our own initiatives as well that we pursue. One program that we're involved in is a training and mentoring for culinary careers. We work with an organization called Root, which is based out of Salem, and they work with underserved youth who are considering careers in culinary. And so we've helped them with tours, with education, with some of the, you know, some of the more specialty education that they wouldn't be able to receive within the confines of that program, seeing, you know, the more expensive cuts to the products, the things that they would really encounter in a restaurant environment so that they can go in confidently knowing that they know what those products are and they have that kind of information. Just a list here of local organizations that we've worked with, just to give you an idea of the breadth and all of these really organizations we've been active with in, I'd say, the last three years. One is Boston Harbor Now. We participate in their programming and their fundraising for programs they do with, with local youth to make sure they can access the harbor islands, you know, that we have these wonderful natural resources and they're not accessible to everyone. So it's specifically for their fundraising of their programs to help youth groups access that and benefit from the natural environment here. Another is Mass Restaurants United, which is a hospitality based organization that we play a role in. I'm actually on their communications committee, helping them with technical assistance. That's a group that was started during the pandemic because so many restaurant workers were immediately unemployed to help build resources, build community, help build restaurants to be stronger and more resilient parts of the economy. So, you know, that's helping our industry and so many people who are working in that industry. Another, just to show breadth, there's a Consequences Forum, which is a, actually a literary magazine that works with Northeastern and is, covers the effects of conflict and has a lot of participation from veterans or people from war torn areas around the world. It helps them explore those, those issues. GreenCrab.org, which is a personal project of mine that I got us involved in and it's to combat the invasive green crab, which is really environmentally decimating our coastlines, native shellfish populations. So we've given a lot of assistance in the community and working with that organization in particular to help popularize, mentor people who want to be part of that fishery and help create a sustainable solution for something that's doing a lot of environmental damage. Another related project is Mass Oyster Project, which is trying to get shell recycling, more conservation in the harbor. We've sponsored youth sports teams by buying their pennies, by helping them do, you know, their fundraising projects. We've worked with numerous chef benefits, as I said before, for organizations like World Central Kitchen, which is feeding people in disaster zones around the world, different AAPI community building efforts such as Chinatown Preservation or various, you know, it's with, with API Month every year, there's usually restaurants are doing fundraising for various community groups, Rodman for Kids, Navy Seals Foundation, which is benefiting veterans and veterans' families, and Dana Farber Cancer Institute, and just so many more. It's really a continuous, continuous thing. We're excited to be part of the community in Chelsea. We already were helped support. We got to be the transportation sponsors for the All American City Awards. So that was exciting to do our little, our little piece of that. Congratulations to everybody who participated. And I think part of the winning that award is, is one of the things that attracts us to this community is coming up with really innovative solutions. I think, you know, we're interested in greening our immediate vicinity. As you saw the slides, you're familiar, the Justin Drive site, it's, it's currently a concrete wasteland. So that can certainly, you know, landscaping, more greenery that's going to help, you know, mitigate the heat, really do some work to improve that, both aesthetically and in the way that's going to carbon capture if we have more trees. Bringing our expertise to Green Roots Community Education Programs, we've already met with them. I think they're doing really amazing work with their food justice programs. And so, you know, one of the aspects of that is they have a teaching kitchen, helping people learn to cook better, learn to use ingredients that maybe they're not familiar with or come up with substitutions. A huge percentage of the people who work at Boston Provisions have a culinary background. So we have a lot of expertise to share. Many of us were chefs at one time or another. So that's a really easy way for us to lend expertise and help with their programs. Product donation for those programs, currently they have no way except to have to purchase if they want meat or seafoods, so we're able to help that way. You know, and really looking to, to see how we can integrate with the community and provide, you know, provide more value even beyond, you know, beyond the jobs and the basic beautification that we can do. I think that's it.
Thank you, Alicia. So that concludes the formal presentation by Boston Provisions. And, and let me be clear, I am well aware that there's probably numerous questions that many people have. Our goal is to sit here as long as possible, be as transparent as possible and answer those questions. I'm not naive that this 10 to 15 minute presentation has quelled any individual's anxiety. We are here, we are good actors and we're prepared to, as long as this takes. So with that, the floor is back to the board.
Thank you for the presentation. Just to clarify, when we open it up to the public, it's not a back and forth dialogue, okay? It's, it's a, they direct them up here and, you know, and questions get answered, sometime they get answered later, but I just want people to think that we're going to be having a, an ongoing dialogue because we'd be here until next week. So thank you very much. And before I open it up to the public, I am going to open it up to the board to answer, to ask any questions. And again, we're going to be hearing this, you know, we're going to be seeing you again in August. You're going to be coming here in front of us in August after you've gone to the planning board in two weeks. You'll be coming here in August. So, and, and just as a little comment about the planning board, people who attend the planning board, we're a public hearing, which means we, we are required to open it up for public participation. The planning board is a public meeting where people are entitled to attend, but they are only entitled to speak at the allow, if allowed by the chair. So I, I said, so there's a difference, I just want you to know. So if you, if you intend to go to the public meet, at the public meeting on the planning board, you may, I'm not sure they're going to open it up for public comment, that would be their choice.
Just a point of clarification, it is actually a public hearing because they have to do a major site review.
Oh, it is a public hearing? Okay, okay, general stuff there. Okay, great, then you will have the chance to talk. When it's your turn. When it's your turn. Is there anybody here who wants to speak before I open it up to the public? Shall we open it up? Okay, again, people, three minutes. And if, and if you're going to repeat what somebody in front of you just said, you can get your name, and every time, give your name and address, just say, I agree with what they said or I don't agree. What, I mean, you can, you have, you can use the entire three minutes that you have, but if you don't need to, you don't need to, that's okay. And if, and if, again, at the end of three minutes, something wasn't asked that you think is still important by somebody else here, you can come up again and ask, you know, up to a minute. So I just want to make sure people understand that. I'm not trying to cut anything down, I'm just trying to make sure everybody has the chance to speak. And again, I'm going to remind you, this will not be the only opportunity to speak because we will be keeping the hearing opening, referring you to the planning board, and we'll be back here next month. Or we'll be here when the planning board is finished. If the planning board, and I say this, usually the planning board is done in a month. If the planning board isn't, because as John said, they're doing a major site review, they may, they might not, we may not see the case until September, but we, we don't know that. So right now, we plan on being back here in August, August 12th. So we can start, however, I mean, we can be random about it, we can start at one side of the room and come over, however, I'm not going to be to dictate that, but I just ask people to come, or why don't you, maybe if you want to speak, why don't you line up in the middle and then you can come up and speak there. So how does that work? Since you're standing and ready to go, why don't you come and make sure, again, name and address and into the microphone.
Let me break the ice. Into the microphone. So I'm going to be first so I can get out as quickly as possible out of the microphone because I'm not great with public speaking. I'm sorry, I have my back against you. Name and address, Svetlina Barterov, Axis, Commandant's Way, 325 Commandant's Way. If somebody has a TV monitor that we can donate to the municipality, it's going to be great so the public can see what the board is seeing. Thank you so much. I want to compress seven million thoughts into three minutes, so let me try to be very quick. And first of all, I just wanted to say I admire the desire of this business to come to Chelsea, the desire for prosperity while providing valuable products and services to the greater Boston area. I want to preface, preface my remarks with much respect, I'm not against any business moving in. If you want to open a coal plant or nuclear plant, that's, that's up to you, but I have a few issues with the parking lot. As you know, this parking lot is designated different zone and I think our building, which is 325 Commandant's Way, is a little bit too close. So let me just show you very quickly. Because, I don't know, you see lines on the maps and you see schematics and you see the old building, but I just wanted to say there is another building that is right across from here. It's about 30 feet away from the parking lot, it's 200 feet. Its home is a sanctuary where individuals and families can find comfort, rest and sense of security. This is where we live, this 150 apartments. And I'm just afraid the parking lot is a little bit too close for comfort. I wanted to talk about many different issues. I think the biggest one that people don't talk about is noise. This, the distance to the building is 15 meters, that's literally, this room is a little bit larger. So talking about noise, just very quickly, I wish I had a podium here. The extreme proximity of the facility to the residential building poses moderate to severe risk to the physical, mental, emotional, social, occupational and environmental well-being of residents. With a fleet of all these trucks moving and idling so many hours a day, sometimes they say it's going to start at 4:00 in the morning. Now it's 6:00 in the morning, maybe they plan for 24 hours. This morning I was out at 8:00 o'clock in the morning, it's very quiet and very nice. I'm afraid the noise is going to cause a few issues because try, truck side link at 85 decibels. I don't want to get into details, maybe I can provide some further information, but the decibel level is about 20 to 25 decibels over the noise generated by the engines, the exhaust system, the tire pavement interactions. This is on top of, of course, other noises, but this, this neighborhood is kind of providing us with all the necessities to create families and live a normal life. Residents living within 400 feet of truck stops or truck routes, they report noise that may, is major nuisance. The reflection between the buildings.
Finish up your thought, please.
I'm going to finish up very quickly. I was just, wanted to ask you, raise your hand if you would like to have an idling truck 24 hours a day in front of your house. I'm going to make sure it happens so you can experience the noise.
Thank you.
And I'll continue the next time. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. Let's give it a chance to pick up stuff. Would you, if you want to leave anything with the board, a part of that, you're welcome to do that.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Is that too high for you?
A little bit.
Pull it down.
Everything is, right?
There you go.
I don't know.
You can pick it up if it's easier for you.
Yeah, I'm easier.
There you go.
Hello, my name is Suzanne Perry and I live at 160 Commandant's Way in Chelsea. And I want, first of all, to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I have lived here for 25 years and for most of that time, either Pillsbury or Signature Bread's was part of the entryway into our neighborhood. And it wasn't the best, however, I do have to admit that the smell of bread wins in a competition with the smell of fish. So I, I am conscious of that. So instead of looking at a similar company or maybe an improvement, we're looking at a Boston Provisions, which I know is a superb company. I don't think, I think all the things we heard tonight, with some exceptions surrounding noise and odor, I would 100% agree with. It's a fine company and all their rules and regulations, I'm sure, are up to date, but that's not my concern. The question is, does this business belong in a residential neighborhood? And that is my question. Frankly, the smell of raw fish permeates the place where they're now. I've been out to Wolf's Seafood a couple of times, it's on a fish pier. I know that Wolf's is moving because the Boston Seaport area is very, the property there is becoming very dear and I'm sure there's also the need to, they want to expand their business and so forth. But nevertheless, there are other fish processing plants there and the smell of raw fish is prevalent. So as we've already spoken, Commandant's Way and William Street is already a very dense area with trucks and so forth. And even though most of them will now not go down, our, the rest of our residential street, Commandant's Way, will be affected. Finally, there is a slippery slope to consider. Boston Provisions will house, will use only one quarter of the space. If you look at the blueprints that are provided, you will see they will use only one quarter of the space. My question is, what are the other three quarters of the space going to be used for? Once this place is gotten a special permit to be used for seafood, are businesses going to move in there? Are offices going to move in there? I highly doubt it. Probably a lot of the neighbors of Wolf's Fish currently are going to be looking for a better place to expand or work their businesses. It only makes sense that this is a slipper- It only makes sense that this is a slippery slope. And, um, I finally think that Chelsea is moving in the wrong direction with this endeavor. Everett is, uh, putting up housing hand over fist on Second Street in some horrible areas. Um, there are so many things, so much building and so much improvement going on. Chelsea itself is a place looking to improve, looking to be better. I just don't see that a fish processing, uh, area or fish plant or fish business or, or however you want to describe it, um, is a boon or a help to Chelsea. Also, it's important to note that the parking spaces in the blueprints go from 277 to 477. Thank you.
Thank you. That's, that'll be my signal. When, when it's the three minutes, I'll go like that so you'll know. I'm not, I don't want to be rude and try to interrupt you, but that will mean wrap it up.
I think this is good.
You know, and, and I, and I, first of all, I should, shame on me for not asking. I know we have two city councilors here. Would you, either of you like to speak for, like, no? Okay. I just. Okay. Thank, thank you.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Your name and address, please.
Marchesa Cottone, 325 Commandant's Way. So I want to start by saying that my grandfather used to say, if you want things to last, you take care of them. It says true for things, for people, for neighborhoods, and for Chelsea. We're not just talking about the parking lot. We're talking about taking care of our community and making sure it lasts for the next generation. We're talking about our homes, our own and our loved ones' health, and the soul of Chelsea. We have been through a lot. We have been through fires, pollution, floods. We're tough, but we're not invincible. Just last week, Chelsea was named 2025 All-America City. That's a big deal. It means we're recognized for our spirit, for our resilience, for our ability to come together as a community. Because we're fighters. We've rebuilt after fires, rallied for clean air, and stood tall as an environmental justice community. A title we earned by surviving decades of pollution. But let's be real, the title isn't a trophy, it's a warning sign. That's not a badge we wear with pride. It means we already face more than our fair share of pollution, health risks, and industrial burdens. Our people deserve clean air. Our families deserve quiet nights, not the hum of industrial refrigeration or the roar of trucks at all hours. Now they're telling us, don't worry, this isn't the fish factory. It's a tiny part of a big shiny food plant, state of the art, no smells, just a few more trucks that you won't even notice. Well, this zoning is just piling more weight on Chelsea's shoulders. It's putting industrial activity right next to our homes, ignoring the buffer zones that are supposed to protect us. It's risking our already strained sewage system and threatening the island and river, which is already vulnerable to pollution. It violates every buffer zone and ignores the 55 decibel noise limit that keeps our nights quiet. My grandfather also said fairness isn't complicated. Don't stack weights on a bent back. And Chelsea's back is already bent. We are 2.4 square miles of resilience, but we're not a dumping ground. Ending industrial runoff to our overloaded sewage system, risking island and river with more pollution, that's not just unfair, it's cruel. We're not against progress, progress. We're not against jobs, but we are for fairness. We are for protecting our community from more harm. Chelsea has worked too hard, fought too long, and come too far to let this happen. So honorable committee members, I'm asking you, let's honor Chelsea's fight. Let's honor that All-America City spirit. Let's reject this zoning because, let's be real, the last thing Chelsea needs is more opportunities for industrial noise, noise and pollution, yes. Let's build playgrounds, not pollution factories. Some choices aren't just unwise, they are un-Chelsea. And if we wanted to live next to a factory, we would have picked another city, but we love it here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Is it okay to go?
Yep.
Okay. Hi. I'm Mara Graham and I am here representing Chelsea Jewish Life Care. We're at 165 Captain's Row. And I just want to introduce Donna Picarello, who's a resident, um, who wants to speak to some of the concerns we have.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You were all told who I am. Um, I'm known by most police officers because I wheel this chair all around Chelsea and no place in between. I have a few questions that are burning that bother me a lot. One, no one has mentioned the children to take a bus, one stop away from your proposed entrance. Elementary school children, many of them get off the bus alone. It would only take one child to make a wrong way turn and wind up in one of, I don't know what size your trucks are, but someone discussed odor and pollution. Do we need any more of that? The answer is a clear no. Admiral's Hill has become a beautiful property. If any of you have been down there, the residents, the owners, they take great care in the property, in the vegetation, in the play areas. There's a huge playground right down the street from where you proposed to put Boston It concerns me very, and I don't have small children anymore, but I see them running off the bus, crossing the street, and their mothers are casually walking over from the apartments across from Boston Provisions. I live very close to Boston Provisions and I wa, well, figuratively walk. I wheel my chair, if you want to put it that way, outside every day unless it rains or snows. So I'm a very likely candidate to get whacked by one of your trucks. And I got this pink chair on purpose. I wanted to be seen. I wanted, I wanted to manage myself in a way that I could freely go from the property down to the stores, um, roam, eat, many things I do down there. And I don't come back until after four. This six to two hour, think about it, the kids are getting ready to board the bus. That doesn't seem quite equitable. Did you have something to say?
I'm reminding you, you had three minutes.
What?
I'm reminding you, you had three minutes and you reached your three minutes.
Oh, good. Oh. Warn me when I have one and I'll speed up.
You, you have zero, so you're all set.
Oh.
But I'll give you another 30 seconds. Go ahead and finish your thoughts.
My thought is, the trucks, the pollution, going and coming from, I have to go by, Justin's Way every time I leave the property, every single time. So there's no way out, other way. The only way is down the street from Justin's Way. And if you're telling me, if I heard correctly, 37 trucks are going to come up and down there, that's a lot of activity for what has become a very quiet area.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. And, and why I appreciate, what I would ask people to do was hold their applause until the end and everybody's had a chance to speak so that we can keep things moving along. And I'm not saying you can't applaud, just wait till everybody's spoken. Thank you, sir. Please introduce yourself, name and address.
Hello? Hello? Can you hear me? Uh, my name is Eddie Gaffney. I live at 100 Commandant's Way. I've lived in Chelsea for over 20 years. I'd like to thank the board members, uh, as well as John DePristi and less of the city council members here, or the, the city members for volunteering, um, and doing this really important job of continuing to make Chelsea a bright future through zoning. Chelsea is very lucky to have Mary O'Malley Park, State Park in the Mystic River, which everyone is to enjoy. People from all over the state come to relax and enjoy this, this beauty. Um, and almost everyone that we spoke with agrees that was in the park that day, you know, throughout the last couple of weeks, whether Winthrop, Everett, other towns, everybody agrees that this industry is not the right location for the beginning of Mary O'Malley Park. It kind of goes against the award you guys got of being an All-American City. I mean, you have this beautiful park and now you have a, a seafood and meat, uh, processing plant there, which, again, there's going to be smells from the seafood leaking out of, uh, trash trucks, or if a truck comes in broken. I mean, everybody knows seafood smells, but also, he said most of it's going to be meat smells. I mean, there's going to be, you know, rotten chicken and, and fish, that smells. Um, real, real quick point on the smells. There was also an incident at the Chelsea Yacht Club not too long ago where a dock got hit. They had to take out the dock and they had to do some quick renovation. They scraped off some mussels for about a day. They washed it all off. It smelt like dead fish for about a week and a half. I'm sure the city got complaints. Everybody couldn't figure out where it was coming from. They had to come and get professionally cleaned the concrete to get rid of the smell. So I just wanted to add that about fish smells. And also too, we have no issue with, um, the seafood and meat processing plant coming to Chelsea. We just don't think this is the right location. Um, the building was built in 1968 and it is on two, um, divided lots, as John, uh, said. We agree with the Chelsea Department of Planning and Development and, uh, Mike Actier from the Chelsea Building Department that wrote on April 1st this year recommends that this application get denied because it's not allowed in this zoning district. You have to allow, uh, extend the use into the naval, um, Naval Hospital District, Commercial District, which is not allowed. I explored other, uh, real quick, sorry. I'm guessing you don't want to make this a precedence with a newly established seafood processing law, which was, um, you guys granted the permission right before Christmas of last year, 2024. I don't think you want to make this precedence be the one that everybody else, uh, uses going forward when they seek special approval, special permit approvals. Um, I, I explored other industrial areas in Chelsea and there are plenty of newly renovated warehouses along Marginal Street and Eastern Avenue, which are looking for tenants. Uh, these areas are, are best suited for this industry because it currently allows for seafood processing in all four districts. The, the newly district, industrial district, the, um, port district, the waterfront district, and the waterfront upland district. They all allow seafood processing, um, in this, um, with a special permit. I'll be real quick. In addition, so I think this area is much better for the location and it's, it's, um, zoning approved. In addition to the large turnout here tonight, we have an online petition with roughly 400 signatures, um, that are against this, um, facility going into this location. Real quick, um, also too, I wa, we all walked around in the commercial properties and majority of the people did not know about this project and are against it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. In summary.
Thank, yep. Okay, finish it up.
Okay. In summary, there's a strong public agreement that is not favorable for this neighborhood and in front of Mary O'Malley Park. And most incidentally, the zoning does not allow for it, um, in the Naval Hospital District. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next. I said, don't do it.
Hi, my name is Tricia Brown. I live at 4, uh, 74 Captain's Row. Thank you, members of the board and.
Could you speak up just a little bit?
Sure. Thank you, members of the board and fellow residents for the opportunity to speak today. We're not here to oppose progress, but to defend the integrity and well-being of our community. While we acknowledge the present, presentation given by Wolf Foods and their, their consultants, we have several critical concerns that remain inadequately addressed. These concerns are rooted in public health, environmental sustainability, zoning alignment, and overall community impact. Public health and air quality risks are a big deal in Chelsea. And every day when I walk out my door, we're faced with pollution all the time. We have the Tobin Bridge, we have the gas, you know, the diesel trucks. It's really tough. And Wolf claims their operations will take place with an insulated environment and that their facilities will completely mitigate environmental impact. However, even their own experts acknowledge the smells will emanate from the loading docks and active carbon drums are being proposed to manage odor. An admission that odor control will be reactive, not preventative. Further, that 30% diesel fleets pose a serious risk emissions, especially for the already overburdened area. DEF fluid usage may meet standards, but that doesn't eliminate the cumulative impact on the community already facing disproportionate pollution levels. The assertion that this facility will less impact, will be less impact than the bread plant is not a justification. It is a minimization of our community's legitimate concerns. Noise and traffic impact is a serious concern for all of us. Wolf downplays their noise footprint citing three decibels difference and suggested that the activity will barely be noticeable. But decibel scales are logarithmic, not linear. So even a small increase could double the noise impact in the real world conditions. Traffic wise, they referenced a mere 2% increase, yet that falls into account for the cumulative traffic from trucks funneling in and out between six and 10, including peak morning hours when personal delivery trucks and logistic vehicles will overlap with school and commuter traffic. William Street is already under pressure. Adding to it even slightly without clear long-term mitigation or enforcement will compromise pedestrian safety, especially near parks and residential zones, and most importantly, our kids. They claim that using software to direct traffic is speculative and not enforceable. There's no binding commitment that prevents trucks from entering prohibited zones like Commandant's Way. Zoning and community, community compatibility. This area sits adjacent to Naval Hospital and Mary O'Malley Park, two places, two spaces meant to promote health and community cohesion. Placing a fish bushery, butchery and meat processing plant, no matter how modern, so close to recreation and residential areas, violates the spirit of local zoning laws and undermines the community's ability to breathe clean air and enjoy quiet green spaces. I, I would hope that you would consider this, that this is, you know, it's beyond something that, you know, we.
We can do better.
We can do better. Thank you.
You know, I had a bunch of kids in here once and I asked them to not, not applaud after everybody spoke so that everybody would have the chance to talk. And they were really good about it, so.
Good evening. Thank you very much for being here and allowing us to come and share our thoughts with you. My name is Marlene Jennings. I live at 33 Breakwater Drive and my husband Jerry and I have lived here happily for 26 years. We are vested in the community. Uh, I have served on the cultural council for 10 years, served on two separate boards for the Salvation Army. Uh, we support St. Luke's Church and we als, I also serve as, on the board for the Friends of Mary O'Malley Park. We love our city. We love the diversity. We love everything about it. What we've seen in the last 26 years is a big change and it's been a great change. It's cleaner, it's more quiet, the air is fresher, it's more beautiful. People take care of their property, not just on Admiral's Hill, but in many of the beautiful neighborhoods in Chelsea. I'm very disappointed that, uh, people didn't consider the wisdom of the people whose shoulders we stand on, who made the zoning originally in that area. I don't understand why they thought it was a good idea to change that zoning. The zoning was there, put there for a reason, that there wouldn't be anything that had a horrible smell. Let's face it, we have our share of horrible smells here in Chelsea. The airport, what's coming over from Everett, I mean, it, you know, we've lived with this for a long time and it's better. And let's keep moving forward. lived with this for a long time and it's better. And let's keep moving forward. We don't want this facility here. We think it's a great company. It's a wonderful company. It would be great. It's just not right for this location. It's just not right. With all the new things that are going on in Everett with the soccer stadium coming in, if you drive down Beecham Street, all those old tanks are coming down, all that old electricity equipment is coming down. We can do better. Something that is better suited for Chelsea. You know, don't sell out for 150 to 200 jobs. We can do better. And I know I can't ask a question, but I'm going to leave you with this. So there's what, 60 trucks that are going to be coming in in the course of a day? The noise level, do those trucks beep every time they back into a loading dock? Okay. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.[655.41][655.41][applause]
Hi, my name is Wenda Kochanaski and I live at.
Can you bring it down? Is it hard? You can pick it up.
I'll just hold it maybe?
Yeah, that might be easier.
Is that good?
That's better for you. It's probably easier for you.
All right. My name is Wenda Kochanaski. I live at 221 Shirtlift Street. And I'm probably going to be reiterating some things that other people have said, but you know, Chelsea, as everyone knows, is about two and a half square miles. We're the fourth most populated city in the state. And we've really, I've lived in Chelsea for, it'll be 20 years next year. And, you know, we've really shouldered the burden of a lot of industrialization for our area. We're two and a half square miles and we have a giant salt pile. We are under the airport. We've already got a meat processing plant with the Cayenne plant. We've got an Amazon warehouse on our border with Everett. There's soon to be a soccer stadium there. There are housing projects, high-income housing projects on steroids on our Everett border. And just getting through Chelsea on a, you know, every day is a struggle. The streets are parking lots. They're filled with trucks. They're filled with moving trucks from movers that are on our border. There's the produce section of Chelsea. And I guess I'm asking just that you reach for something better for the city than more industrialization. I just think we have enough. And I think maybe more green spaces, maybe other amenities that can make this a healthier, better place for the people who are here. And I guess that's my request.
Thank you. Why don't you keep it down? Just hand it to the person next to you. It would be easier.
Can we lower it? I can't hold it.
Oh, okay, okay.
Hi, my name is Carol Resnick and I've lived at 68 Captain's Row rear for about 30 years. I've lived in Chelsea for about 40 years. I taught here for about 30 years. So I see some of my students running around. But I'm going to ask a few questions and I can't see behind me, so I'll trust that they will tell me if hands go up. So I want to ask, I want you to ra.
And you can talk here, but we're not going to, we're not having a dialogue. Just share.
No, no, no. It's rhetorical.
Okay.
Okay? I'm an English teacher. All right. Raise your hand if you think it's a good idea to have a dead meat processing plant in the middle of a residential city. Any hands? No. Okay. Raise your hand if you think it's a good idea to have a dead animal processing plant, which will prohibit the elderly and severely disabled from stepping out their front door for a breath of fresh air and a little bit of peace. Any hands?
Let's just ask, why don't you just ask the questions rather than any hands? We'll assume it's rhetorical, as you said.
Okay.
So you need not ask.
Okay.
There you go.
All right. Raise your hand if you think it's a good idea to have a dead animal processing plant in a city that already has 350 trucks going down William Street every day. And it's more than that, I know. With paint, lead paint falling from the bridge and planes going over our heads. Do you think that this is a good idea? Raise your hand. Raise your hand if you think it's a good idea to have a dead animal processing plant where children at the nearby school, along with adults, have life-threatening fish allergies. It certainly can't be the jobs which will be low-paying and dignity stripping. Don't we think more of our people and our city than to destroy the only place in Chelsea where everybody can come to and get a breath of fresh air and experience some peace? I appreciate you guys coming here and listening. And I think it's very important for the whole city to have a place that they can come to. I walk Admiral's Hill, I walk the Mary O'Malley Park every day. And it's people who are joyfully experiencing fresh air and the water. So I would hope that the zoning board would stay straight and like somebody else said, keep it the way it is and not split it. It's a residential area. Thank you.
Thank you.[957.73][957.73][applause]
Hi, my name is Donna DiGrissini. I live over at 100 Captain's Row. I've been a resident of Chelsea for over 30 years. And I think I bring a real different perspective to what I'm going to say than everybody in this room unless there's someone else. I personally worked for decades in the perishable food industry. I worked for Native Poultry across the street from this facility. I worked for meatpacking, processing, and finally owned my own seafood processing and manufacturing and distribution center on the Fish Pier in Boston. I will guarantee you, as wonderful as this company sounds, it is no different from what we all did. We were all hazard inspected. We all followed regulations. We were all immaculate. Okay? I've been in hundreds of some of the multimillion-dollar companies to the smallest ones. There is absolutely no way to get rid of this odor. Okay? I worked on my shipping floor. Okay? I worked and skinned fish. I watched gurry go out the door. I let people back trucks in at 4 o'clock in the morning from Canada. I will tell you, you will never, never keep this odor down. Okay? Because of the gurry, because of the dumpsters and refrigerated trucks drip and drip and drip and drip wherever they go. That's the nature of what they do. If you go down the Fish Pier, which is highly, highly inspected, when they are closed and walk around there, it will take your breath away. When I worked at Native Poultry, okay, spotless clean, spotlessly clean, supplied all the supermarkets in the area. When it was closed on the weekend, you could smell it a block away. You will, it will permeate everything on the outside of this building. And that is what I want to tell everybody is that is the reality of this business. You know, a lot of people said, how could you stand it? Well, to me, it smelled like money. But to other people, it's not for everybody. And you can walk in a fish plant and just go pick up an order and you can smell it on your clothes. Somebody will say, woo, you stink. I worked at companies that were multi-generational, that were famous nationwide. My company sent fish to the White House and fish all over the United States. And we were fantastic and immaculate. I've cleaned my own shipping and processing floors. There is no way you will stop this odor. And I don't want to criticize their efforts of this company. We all do it. We all do it. Maybe some better than others. But the bottom line is it can be only mitigated. It cannot be removed. And I just don't think it's a fit for such a beautiful residential area. I think there are higher, I am now a Realtor, so I can say I think there are much higher and better uses for that facility and that area. Maybe something with condos above it and some stores underneath it, or something in line with what you see going on in Wellington or, you know, over in Somerville. But certainly not to bring food processing. There's a reason that these food processing facilities are stuck out in areas all by themselves. And with that, I'll leave you and hope that people will take what I've said into consideration because I have firsthand knowledge and spent decades in the industry. Thank you.
Thank you.[1163.08][1163.08][applause]
Thank you very much. I'm Aslam Yildirim. I'm at 160 Commandant's Way. And I just want to say that I recognize new business is important, new jobs important, but it's essential that they are situated at the right location. I think Commandant's Way, Admiral's Hill neighborhood is one of the few quiet and well-maintained areas in Chelsea. I think if it's going to improve any area as they are presenting as if it's the loveliest thing, it should be located somewhere it needs improvement. Because definitely Admiral's Hill does not need this kind of improvement. It's not going to improve Admiral's Hill. It's not going to add anything to Admiral's Hill. Instead, it's going to create unpleasant orders, increase traffic, noise pollution, and general decline of the quality of life for the residents. In addition to that, I'm afraid that my property values will decline too. Who would want to buy a house with smells stinky area? No one. This would be a step backwards for our neighborhood and it should be situated properly. It has no place in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.[1251.01][1251.01][applause]
Good evening. Elizabeth Tousanyat from 160 Commandant's Way. I just want to support any comments about the smell and dispel any doubts about it. And toward that end, I visited Wolf when the company first spoke to us over a Zoom call in April. We drove there a few days later, walked around, no, lowered the windows of the car and the fish smell came right in. Drove around the back, the side, the front, especially in the back. Very strong smell. Again, this past Sunday, June 29th, walking around Seaport. It's closed, all neat and clean and tidy all around Wolf's Fish Plant. Very strong smell. Please do not doubt for one moment that there is a strong fish smell. Open, closed, clean or not clean. It's there. Thank you very much.
Hi, Carlos Verrier, 60 Commandant's Way. Here also on behalf of Team Trust, which is, owns 50 and 70. So I'm just here to support what everybody has already eloquently said. I don't think I have a lot to add other than just providing our support. My father happened to have been the architect for Admiral's Hill, Robert Verrier, many years ago. And I think that in the spirit of being, doing things to support change, it's important that we think about doing them in a constructive way, not a destructive way. And I think that the residents have all been very eloquent that they believe that this is going to be destructive towards the environment and not constructive. There has to be other businesses and other ways to develop this property that fit into the zoning already and can be just a positive, not a negative on the environment and the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.[1396.97][1396.97][applause]
Good evening. I am resident of Chelsea. Sorry, my name is Alexandro. I am employed at Wolffish. I want to say this company, sorry, I am nervous. This company.
Take your time.
created opportunity for our community. I am also grateful for this company. This company investing in my English, in my English education. I am started in the company in packing product. In one year, I am promoted and supervisor for the sales room. I think so Wolffish needs opportunity for the, sorry, for the show that differ. Thank you.
Thank you.[1465.83][1465.83][applause]
That's right.
Hi, I'm Jean Higgins, 100 Boat Swains Way. One of the gentlemen.
Jean, pull down just a little bit, please. The other, the tall one.
Jean Higgins, 100 Boat Swains Way. One of the gentlemen had mentioned that he had strongly encouraged some kind of equipment that would mitigate the odors and so forth. Well, strongly encouraging is not the same thing as mandating or requiring. Second point, Pillsbury, who had the signature plant before, signature, has state-of-the-art oxidizing, oxidizing equipment that mitigates VOCs. If anybody has any information to the contrary, I'd like to hear it because Pillsbury is a pretty big company. Third of all, as of today, several towns close to us, De'Anvers, Lynnfield, Saugus, had their trash collectors go on strike. Rhetorical question, could you imagine 97 degrees heat index today? Can you imagine if that company that is proposing to come in had their trash workers go on strike? You know, the vermin alone and the odors. Wouldn't be great. That's it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Jennings and I live at 33 Breakwater Drive in Chelsea.
You're the tall one. You needed up there.
Okay, I'm Jerry Jennings. I'm a resident of Admiral's Hill. I live at 33 Breakwater Drive in Chelsea. And I've lived here for 26 years. So with my wife, we're quite invested with this community. To that extent, I've served as a member of the Board of Trustees of several associations on Admiral's Hill. And I'm speaking to you tonight as a director of the Admiral's Hill Owners Association. The AHOA, as we call ourselves, is concerned about the impact of the proposed fish plant on the common roadways on Admiral's Hill. I'd like to remind the board that the AHOA pays for all the maintenance of these common roadways, which includes snow clearing and more expensively, road resurfacing. The AHOA itself is funded by the residents of Admiral's Hill. The proposed fish plant intends to use Commandant's Way from the intersection of Justin Drive to William Street. And that is one of the common roadways under the aegis of the AHOA. This will obviously result in much greater wear and tear on the road. Maintenance will dramatically increase and therefore the cost, which is solely borne by the association with no contribution from the city or the property owner. Secondly, the HOA is also concerned for the safety of the pedestrians, as you've already heard tonight, in this densely populated residential neighborhood due to the heavy trucking resulting from this plant. Third, the HOA is concerned about the noise and toxic fumes from refrigerated trucks potentially running 24 hours per day. It's of particular concern, given the proximity of Fairfield Axes. And I'd like to really point out the highly respected and world-renowned Chelsea Jewish Nursing Home Complex. I'd like to point out this facility is known around the world for its extremely innovative care for the devastating folks, for the folks that suffer the devastating disease of ALS. It is to them a sanctuary. And to be out in the outdoors in this neighborhood is a matter of their quality of life. The HOA strongly urges the zoning board to maintain the longstanding zoning of this area, which prohibits fish processing. Thank you.
Thank you.[1722.33][1722.33][applause]
Hi, Terri Widener, 100 Captain's Row, 26 years here. First, I would like to do what somebody earlier did was to congratulate the city and its residents, having just been named an All-American City. And I will quote this, there is a purpose to it. Quote, "Chelsea is the national model for engaging residents, business, and government stakeholders in the pursuit of environmental goals. Their efforts are creating lasting impacts that reduce and mitigate effects of climate change while bolstering residents' well-being." End quote. That's why we're all here tonight, to continue to doing just the type of collective discussion and decision-making that we are trying to do tonight. To that end, I'd like to mention a topic that I only heard brought up once tonight. I of course agree with everything that's been said before me. But this is the potential for medical and physical health issues with respect to people living with allergic reactions from small to life threatening from small to life-threatening events. I'm speaking for myself and for all and all who will be affected by airborne particles containing not just repellent odors, but allergens for those of us who have a life-threatening allergy to seafood. Whatever ventilation and purifiers are used to dissipate odor are blowing deadly pollutants into the air. If you can smell it, you are inhaling it. Everyone is. Please do not endanger our citizens and city for little return on your investment of tax cuts or the promise of not very many new jobs. As we understand it, Chelsea residents already work in the South Boston plant and will probably retain their jobs here in Chelsea, which in the aggregate means there may not be many new jobs. Visits to the South Boston plant, as has been brought up, after business hours, have been shown a clean and tidy external operation. However, the smell is horrific, overwhelming, nauseous, and affects a considerable area. Remember, if you can smell it, you are being affected. We do live in a windy city. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
My name is Wei Yuci Tafawa. I live at 53 Breakwater Drive in Chelsea. My grandmother often reminds me that a cow does not know the use of its tail until mosquito season. The city of Chelsea does not have to wait for mosquito season to know the value of our neighborhood to the value of Chelsea. When people ask me where you're from, I said, "I'm from Chelsea, soon to be rezoned West Boston." Because there's where we have the FBI headquarters, and you travel north, and you hit the marina, and you go a bit further, and you come to this beautiful little enclave called Admiral's Hill. And I'm appealing to all those who are vested with the power to make decisions, to make those decisions wisely. My grandmother also used to say to us, "A stone that is at the bottom of a river has no idea how hot the sun is at the top." We are from that neighborhood. We are not the stone at the bottom of the river. We know what impact having a fish factory, a fish processing plant would have on the value of Chelsea, not the value of Admiral's Hill, the value of Chelsea. Right? And that's because of where it is proposed to be located. So I leave you by saying, "Let's Chelsea rezon West Boston." Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for being here tonight, everybody here. I am so blown away with the information--
Ma'am, ma'am, sorry.
Say it again. I am so amazed at the level of detail and research that has gone on tonight.
Did you give your name and address?
Oh, Jane Emerson, 50 Boatswain's Way. I've been here for 32 years. And Chelsea is unbelievable. It's gorgeous. And I don't think that this is the right thing for the city. I just want you to embrace everything and all the research that has been done tonight by these people here tonight. I'm just blown away by it. So please keep that in mind. And just imagine if that were your house, sitting on the hill, and you were bringing in this facility, and you were looking at the potential for those odors, what the impact would be to your quality of living and the quality of what you're invested in for most of your life. And I plan to be here for a very long time. So that's 32-year resident. And I'm just asking you to please, 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 listen to all of the information you had tonight, because it's truly amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Nicholas Gregoretti, and I've proudly called 65 Breakwater Drive and Chelsea home for the last three and a half years. I chose this city because I believed in its future: a high quality of life, safe public spaces, and long-term economic growth. Boston Provisions LLC, or BP, promises 150 jobs and tax revenue. But that's a short-term gain hiding a long-term problem. If allowed to proceed, BP will spill foul odors, pollutants, and negative consequences that will disrupt, dismantle, and devastate Chelsea's quality of life, public spaces, and long-term economic growth. First, BP will spill into our quality of life. The hill and surrounding areas are clean, quiet, and walkable. The air is fresh. Neighbors stroll with kids and dogs, enjoying peaceful, healthy atmosphere. But fish and meat processing facilities are known to emit strong foul odors and attract vermin. And the meat processing industry is fraught with human rights violations. In New Bedford, seafood plants triggered so many complaints that the Board of Health launched an investigation and found high levels of trimethaline, a compound that smells like rotting fish, but isn't. It's toxic. In Gloucester, National Fish and Seafood was cited for odor violations by mass DEP. An investigation conducted by Human Rights Watch found rampant mistreatment of workers in harsh conditions at reputable industry giants like Smithfield Foods. And I checked their website. Smithfield Foods offers a very similar benefits package to his employees as BP. If this project is approved, make no mistake, our daily lives will change. Our peace and comfort will not be preserved. BP's actions will disrupt, dismantle, and devastate our quality of life. Second, BP will spill into our public spaces. Mary O'Malley State Park is one of Chelsea's greatest assets, used by families, Excel Academy students, and people from across the city. They come for clean air, green space, and a sense of safety. But fish processing facilities produce airborne pollutants and offensive odors that spread beyond their walls. The very presence of this kind of operation near the park undermines everything it represents. What is now a safe, vibrant space for recreation and education will no longer be the same. BP's actions will disrupt, dismantle, and devastate our public spaces. Third, BP will spill into Chelsea's long-term economic future. Chelsea is moving forward. We see it in the renovated park, the upcoming soccer stadium, and new developments. But that progress is fragile. Developers will not invest next to a facility known for noxious odors, air pollution, and pest problems. Projects that elevate Chelsea may walk away. This is a moment of decision for what kind of city we want to be. BP's actions will disrupt, dismantle, and devastate our long-term economic growth. So I ask, do we want a Chelsea that smells like opportunity? Or do we want a Chelsea that smells like fish? Please, don't let BP spill on the hill. Protect our quality of life, our public spaces, and our economic future. Say no to this proposal and say yes to the Chelsea that we believe in. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who hasn't spoken who wishes to speak? You have one minute. One minute. I told you, if you came up again--
All right, you already know my name. I represent--
Say it again, please.
Svetlina Barterov, 325 Commandant's Way. I live in a building with 150 apartments. And my wife are the only people representing. So I feel like I need a few more minutes, because this is the major building--
You get one minute.
--that's exactly right there. Unfortunately, I have one minute only. Chelsea Palante was this--
You can come back next meeting.
Thank you, I will. Chelsea Palante happened a few months ago. We went to the park. All the kids and all of us wrote little notes. And we were talking about, what do you need to stay and thrive in Chelsea? What do you want the city to look like for your kids? And nobody wrote, "I want an industry that will bring unbearable and hazardous conditions." In Chelsea, the next step is not only not accepting these projects, we're going to file a motion to just completely get rid of any industrial zone south of Beecham Street. I wanted to talk about the sleep deprivation, cognitive impairment, reduced creativity and innovation, emotional instability, increased workforce errors and accidents, decline in motivation, absenteeism and financial losses, career impact, vicious cycles of overwork. We're going to have to leave our building. We rent there. We created amazing relationships with our neighbors. They're leaving already. We are going to have to leave, because it's going to be unbearable to wake up to these noises. We're going to lose our jobs. And we're going to have to start over one more time somewhere else. And I'm getting sick of being an immigrant and moving from place to place and finding a new home all the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's something that you want to submit to the board, as I said earlier, if you have this stuff written down and you want it to go into the record, submit it, and it'll go into the record, okay? You can give it here at the end, right? Okay? If you want to give it to us, we'll take it. You can keep that part if you want.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just first, I want to just thank everyone for coming out tonight. This is the first time that-- Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Calvin Brown, District Gate City Councilor. Live on Admiral's Hill. This is the first time that we actually got a full understanding and proposal in view of what the proposal would be up there. It comes with a lot of promise. It sounds very good. But it's another opportunity for the residents to come out here and to hear it, and also to give their opinion. So we have, as a city councilor, I take those two, and I put them together, and I continue to watch the project and move forward and try to figure out what's best for Chelsea. Obviously, when we hear these proposals, we like to think about what we're here for, to create jobs, to continue to work with our residents and provide opportunity. As we all know, since the pandemic, jobs have been very hard to get. Folks have not been going to work. Folks have not been back to work. Economic development has been slow. It's things that we listen to to find out what fits in our neighborhood, what proposals we get. We haven't received a lot of proposals for this site, so we listen to them. This is the first step that we actually got solid information. Now it's time for us to go back and find out what was really true, what is really being said here, and how do Chelsea fit in, and if they do fit here, in going on the meetings. I'll be at the next meeting. I like to ask the proponents-- I mean, not the proponents, but the people here today, if they can give us a feedback prior to those next meetings that we can hear some of the questions that was asked, that I can get more understanding how they feel about those questions and also the concerns of the residents. But again, I thank all the residents for being here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. And I was remiss by, I wanted to make a-- identify people who submitted letters, some of whom spoke today, but I don't want anybody, if they realized that they had sent them, that I had mentioned them. So I'm just going to identify the names of people who submitted letters, for or against, just letters in general. Fidel Maltese, Eric Swartzrock, Yasemin Almarib, Sam Lang, Melissa and Alex Juloa, Rhonda Weiner, Robyn Sola, Terry F. Widener, Elizabeth Chehanian, S. Michelle Sisselman and James Taylor, Yi Ho Chen, Nicholas Gregoretti, Kaylee Verrington, and Greg Murphy. So I didn't want to be remiss in saying that these people had submitted notes. And again, we're not closing the public participation portion. The next step is, this is going to the planning board on the 15th. It will be in this room. And as John indicated earlier, because they're doing a site plan review, it will be an open meeting, and they'll be here so you can speak and point your mind then as well. The next hearing before us is scheduled for August 12th, a Tuesday. What was the second Tuesday of the month? And we did a special one this time, because we knew that there would be more people who wanted to speak on this. And that will be in the same places here. And, you know, it won't be advertised again, because it's already been advertised. You can check if you want prior to that meeting with the department, because if, for example, the planning department or planning board hasn't finished their review yet, we will not be then seeing it until September. And I wouldn't want people to come out when they don't need to. So, but so double-check on that one. They probably would be-- The agenda will be posted on the site, on the website, but if you have any questions. So again, thank you all for being here. Yes, if you want to speak. And I'm only doing this because it's still open. If I had closed the hearing, you wouldn't be able to speak, so.
Thank you very much.
Name and address again.
Marlene Jennings, 33 Breakwater Drive. I just wanted to say, thank you for acknowledging all those people that wrote letters. I also want to say, for the record, I checked tonight, there were 397 people that wrote in on the petition that went to John Dupreez and Fidel Maltese against this. So I wanted you also to be aware of those, the petition that went out as well.
Was that petition? We don't have a copy of that. Is that here?
It was, you had to go on to our flyer through the QR code, and it took you to a petition.
Okay, well, we'll need a copy of that.
I'm sorry.
I'll be happy to give it to you.
I did not get a copy of that.
You didn't get--
No.
You didn't get any--
Yeah, we'll need a hard copy for our records.
But didn't you get the emails that were sent to you through the petition?
No.
You never received 400 letters against this.
No.
Did Fidel?
I don't know. I've been smoking with him about it.
Okay, because when I, I just went on to it prior. I'll bring one up after.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Again, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, real quick. I will email--
Name and address.
Eddie Gaffney at 100 Commandant's Way. I'll email my information to the board. I didn't realize we could do that. And I think there may have, John, your email was in there, but I don't know, maybe there was some-- Something happened, it wasn't forwarding to you. We'll get that straightened out. One thing I just wanted to add, because I ran out of time, is I did speak with previous city council members and planning board members. And the people that I know that used to be on those boards are against this. I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's, all right.
I didn't think you said you closed the meeting, did you?
No, but I said one you had-- All right, one more minute.
All right, I just, I'm kind of confused and--
Talk.
Thank you. I would like to know who is our primary contact to make sure-- It's John? Is it John?
Yes.
Thank you. I just want to make sure so we can close that loop.
It's going to go to the board. The board has a record. They have to keep the record. So they are the primary keeper of the whole record for the case.
And he's the primary contact--
And John is the department head, and he gets it.
Great, I just wanted to clarify.
That's okay. All right. Motion to close? Motion made by Joe--
[inaudible] We have some folks who want to get some information in the board.
They wanted to give, say what? Well, give whatever, if you have anything you want to give to John, if you have something you want to give for the record. Yeah, you can drop that off at any time. You can drop it off at the department anytime. You can get it in email. So, and yeah. And again, look for, you know, whatever papers you want, that's where they go. Well, we don't need a motion, it's automatically. Continue to talk till it's 12. No, I just have to know. Do we have a motion, continue to the 12th? Made by Joe, seconded by-- Seconded by Marilyn. All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, okay. So, I need a motion to adjourn. Made by Joan, seconded by Arthur. Do you get that, guys?